Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
The fourteenth Board of Directors meeting. What I'd like to do is just briefly go over this agenda for everyone that's here and those that are on the Zoom. The, uh, tonight, we're holding the meeting both by Zoom and, uh, and presence. We prefer and we're trying to move to be and do things in the presence in the future. So right now, we've got them both. Uh, the agenda that was published, my first item is public comment. The second item is employee E recognition. Uh, the third item is North Vinington representatives. The fourth item is finance. The office consent agenda. Six is policies. Seven superintendent's report, a principal's report, uh, is eight. The chair's report is nine, ten is FYI. Uh, and then we have the consent agenda on the back. What I would like to ask, are there any items that need to be added to the agenda for our discussion? From the group or from the audience? No, seeing none. Well, the, the agenda will be as published. And then the next thing will be if there any order of rearrangement of anything that I stated that need to change. So that we can move them up or back on the agenda. Seeing none and hearing none, then we will be all set. Welcome, everybody. Uh, the first item is a public comment. And this is, uh, the section, um, that we're wanting to hear things that related to the public. Because I have a separate area for board members public comment. Anyone in the public that has a, uh, public comment?
I'll vote first.
No, you're gonna, you're gonna.
Want me to go?
You're going to, I'm gonna follow up on the chair.
Go ahead.
Comment.
Alright.
Okay. So, uh, none from the public. Recognition of employee. We have, um, that's the middle school.
So I try to speak to that now because I do not have, uh, that organized for today. I spoke to the, um, the contact you gave me from the Red Cross and he is out of town in Florida at a funeral, unfortunately, not today. And I have plans to have that, uh, person recognized at the eighth grade celebration on June, uh, on June ninth.
So we're making a change to that. So we won't have the recognition here tonight. We'll be moving that to June ninth at the middle school.
Yep, uh, the celebration starts at six o'clock and it will be part of the, uh, agenda as part of the agenda for this, the celebration.
Thank you.
And I've talked to the employee and they will be present. And I've talked to Leo from the Red Cross and he will be there to, uh, present the awards or the recognition.
Okay, we just will have that down for, for part of the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the, uh, the next item on the list is, uh, North Vinington representative. We had, uh, a, uh, uh, those were going to go under the committee report.
Oh, okay.
The, uh, the next item, we had, we were down two board members, one from Powell and one from North Vinington. And we were lucky to have Kerry go out and, uh, do some work for us and find us a, uh, a replacement for her. And her replacement is here tonight. Uh, that sits here. Hi, her name is Wendy June Marie. And, uh, and she would like to be, uh, a board member. And June sent, uh, uh, I said, Jimmy, Wendy sent a, a letter notification to me, uh, in terms of all the things that she been through in, in previously to this. And I won't read all of the things that are on her letter, but I'm going to enter the letter into, uh, the minutes. So that it'll be a part of the process for her. Uh, she, uh, some of the things that she mentioned here, if you don't mind, if I say that she worked as a, uh, online contest development for the public broadcasting system for a number of years, education consultant. Uh, she actually, uh, has been a, a principal. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Yes.
For middle school.
For the middle school in Washington. She worked as a, a teacher in the National Park Service in Washington DC and, uh, a bunch of a lot of other things. And she's a very good collaborator and negotiator. So, uh, I, that's as much as I want to do for the introduction for that. And I just, uh, will be happy to have a vote here as part of the process was to have a letter of submission to the board. Uh, and, uh, we have that. The next item was to have a vote to, uh, select Wendy to, uh, feel the rest of the term for Carrie Barnes. And then she would then need to go to the town office and get the one in and take the old and the come back and be a full acting school board member.
Make a motion to accept Wendy June Marie's, is this an application?
Yeah.
Bring Wendy June Marie onto our board.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded for the nomination of Wendy Marie, uh, June Marie to take the, uh.
Gotta get her name right.
Yes. The, uh, North Vinington position that was previously, uh, hailed by Carrie Barnes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
Yes. All in, uh, in favor, uh, of the, of the.
Aye.
Charlotte something.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Aye. I, uh, don't have a, okay, any, any, uh, no's or extensions? None, that the record show that Wendy was unanimously voted, uh, to, uh, become a, uh, school board representative from the North Vinington area on the Mount Anthony Union High School.
I might say she's a little overqualified, but we're glad to have you.
My Carrie, if I was to, uh, I was more than happy to see you.
Thank you, Miss Seale.
On the new.
Oh, oh, well, I was only wanting them to see me, oh, but. Uh, I didn't realize it. But, oh, okay. So, welcome, Wendy.
Thank you.
Yes. The, uh, the next item on our agenda, uh, is the, uh, the finance committee and finance report. Under the financial report, there are several items. Uh, the first item is the treasurer's report and, uh, from, uh, treasurer David Erphey. And, uh, it's two reports, one from March 31st, a total of 10 million, 79,110 dollars and 94 cents. And the second one was, uh, April 30th, a 12 million, 968,474 dollars and 91 cents. Uh, to be voted and accepted and have a motion to accept the treasurer's. I'm moving. Second by Fran, second by, uh, is that Tori? Oh, that was, uh.
That's Ron.
Okay. That was Ron. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, or would I?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Yeah. Any extensions, abstaining, none?
None.
Okay, good, 100% for that. The, the second item on, uh, on the finance is award of an engineering design contract for HVAC optimization project. And that was dated April 30th, uh, 22. And is there someone from?
I'm, I'm gonna speak to that, Leon.
Okay, so, uh, the, uh, the superintendent, James, will speak to that.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, I wasn't able to join you, uh, in person this evening. Um, so we do have a project manager, Michael Briggs, who we hired through Centerline Architects, who's been working with our director of, uh, finance and operations, Renee Gordon. I asked, we go through these projects for Esser Funds. So, uh, this was to develop and oversee all our school building projects is what we use, uh, Michael Briggs for. But this project that we're here to vote on tonight is funded through our AARP asset conceptual funds for HVAC optimization. So what we're trying to optimize with this money, uh, here's the, the main four projects. Testing and balancing of mechanical systems with improved filtration and disinfection. Indoor air quality monitoring systems installed in, this will make Tim Payne happy. Install air conditioning and now probably Chris McGuire happy since. Uh, install air conditioning and air tempering throughout the buildings. And install slash upgrade building HVAC management system. That's automated computerized systems for our, our HVAC. So these projects were submitted and have received concept approval from the agency of education. And that allows the next step to occur, which is design engineering. So we want to, uh, our project manager solicited proposals for the engineering design of the HVAC optimization, uh, projects. As seven different firms we submitted from, three responded. So the recommendation tonight is to award the engineering and design and construction administration contract to DuBois and King. DuBois and King, uh, is a well-known firm to us and they have previously done work in both MAU campuses. Uh, preliminary schedule on this is designed to be completed by, if awarded tonight. Award completed by fall of 2022. Uh, bidding completed by January of 2023. Construction completed by August of 2023. And the Esser Funds go through August of 2024. So as long as there's no delays, we would be all right with the timeline. The conceptual estimated cost, including design, construction and permitting and the contingency and all of that. Uh, for the Union High School, it's 4 million, 270,000 dollars. And for the Union Middle School, it's 1 million, 695,500. So, uh, this was all put together by Renee, so I want to make sure I give her credit. She is up in Arlington, uh, with assistance superintendent Laura Bro, Bro tonight because, uh, we have two meetings going on simultaneously. So, uh, we're asking you to award, uh, the bid to DuBois and King. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Are there any questions for Jim? Well, we can have a, a, a motion to, uh, accept the recommendation from, uh, administration, the finance committee to award the, uh, the bid, uh, to DuBois and King for the amounts indicated by Jim online. Uh, and so then we can have a discussion. We have a motion.
So moved.
Dame, making a motion.
I got that.
Uh, Fran did the second. Uh, now we open for any discussions. Uh, Jackie?
I have only one question. How does this affect the, uh, scope and, and, uh, knowing what, what's wrong with the building that, that we discussed that last meeting? In other words, aren't engineers going into the building to see, uh, the, um, pluses and minuses in, in our?
So, as we, as I mentioned in our last meeting, we have suspended doing our own RFP for engineering studies because that is another project that the state is going on. We don't know what the depth of what they were doing. So this, this would not impact that, uh, it may reduce what they find because we're, we're already improving HVAC systems uh, with, as part of the structure. So this is an addition, but it would not supplement, uh, in a supplement, but it would not replace it, Jackie.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone on board, uh, at home that have a question?
Uh, this is Stephanie Mulligan. I just had a quick question. So are we, so we're, we're voting on the, like, we're voting to, um, award to DuBois and King. And then will, is this, this is for the preliminary and they're going to then put to contract, like, put out to bid? The con, Jim, you mentioned, like, the costs, like, associated.
Back to you. Yeah.
That, that will come back to the board when?
Yeah, we'll be back to the board once, with all those timelines that I mentioned.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got it.
Or is this a, like, are, is this a time and expense, are, were these time and expense or fixed fee or not to exceed contracts?
So if you sort of direct the question to the, all of us and to the board, we can get it. Because it's sort of difficult being at presence and online. So Stephanie, the question that she wanted to ask, uh, so that then Jim can hear. And then we'll, uh, when you're done, we'll just ask him to reply.
Sorry, uh, my question is just out of curiosity, is it, like, are these, like, fixed, were they all fixed fee or not to exceed on the engineering proposals? Or are, are these estimates based on, you know, time and expense? And then I'll mute myself.
I don't have that answer, Stephanie, to this evening. I could get it for you, but I, I, I would only be speculating on what, how that was put together.
Okay, I was just curious, um, so Leon, I'm at, like, the reason I'm asking the question is just to see if we were looking at, like, the same types of proposals for each, um, each one of the engineering firms. But I, you know, I mean, I'm reading Centerline's, I read Centerline's engineering proposal. And so I would assume that they, they would have highlighted it in that, um, statement to the board.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I'm, in, in the Centerline document, it's, it's other things in here, Jim, that represents, it's Mount Anthony and Mount Anthony Middle School, but the other schools are also listed on that document. Uh, we are to be only concerned with a portion that's, that, that's to be done by Mount Anthony High School and Middle School. Is that correct? Based on?
That's correct.
Based on the document that was included in the package. Okay. I just wanted to make sure, even though this is going all over SVSU, but we're, we're dealing only with a portion that deals with the high school and the middle school.
Yep, yep, with the, with the dollar amounts that I read into the record, yes.
That's right.
Can I have those, can I have those dollar amounts again? I think the high school was 4 million and, uh, uh, or the high school was one point something and the middle school was four.
Yeah, let me flip a page.
Let me, he's gonna flip the page.
So, Mount Anthony Union High School, 4 million, 270,000. Mount Anthony Union Middle School, 1 million, 695,500.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So any other questions, uh, comments? Hearing none, uh, would like to have a confirmation vote, all in favor? Aye. Online, uh, the area votes, uh, here.
Stephanie, yes.
Stephanie, I heard her, you got Tori on and, uh, Charlotte.
Hand is up.
First hand. Keep Susan's hands up. Oh, anyways, we can. Yeah, okay, so let's, let's, uh, have about, that's all, we have a, a positive vote. Are there any, any no's? Are there any extensions? Hearing none will go with the full 100% and, uh, affirmative for the, for the motion. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, board.
Yes, and thank, uh, the finance for that. The next item.
I'm excited that this project is moving forward. I, I am excited that, you know, we're, we're, I'm certainly concerned about whether everyone else, as we battle to get contractors to do this work, but.
The, uh, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is quite loaded. We have minutes and on the back for the consent agenda, we have January 19th, uh, January 26th, February 15th, February 28th, March 11th, and March 16th. We have ones, uh, uh, ones on there for a total of, uh, 5 million, 342,159 dollars and 93 cents total. And about, and it's a total of 11 payroll tickets to represent that with two board checks. Uh, we have a bunch, we have two retirements. And these retirements, uh, come, I'm gonna list these, Michael and Roxy. And, uh, Michael, a groundskeeper, the high school has 17 years of service. And Roxy Blow, uh, is the secretary at the middle school, 23 years of service. Next, a leave of absence, we have none. We have resignations, uh, on the number five, and I won't list them all. I read them all. And the, I mean, uh, then I read all the nominations that were included there. And then we have nominations, but replaced them on the number six. And I read all of those and they all appear to be in order. So, uh, can I have a motion? Fran, move, and second?
Second.
Dave, second, the motion to accept the consent agenda as indicated. Any discussion besides comments I made earlier?
I guess my only question would be, can I vote on the minutes before I was on the board?
This is, uh, stage, because.
Yes, I believe you can.
Okay.
Can you, you're not voting, you're not voting for the, you're voting that we're accepting the minutes? You're not necessarily voting that you agree with them, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Charlotte, that's, that's who it was that we could, it was kind of hard to see. But, but anyway, uh, you got the answer from James, you know, Mr. Cokeen, that yes, you're voting on the documents that were prepared and sent by reading notes. Are there any other questions or comments concerning the consent agenda? Hearing none, uh, have a vote to affirm the acceptance of the consent agenda. Eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are any abstentions, abstaining? Here none, so it's unanimous. We're moving right along here. Uh, item number six is the policies. Uh, and we have a list of policies to, uh, um, to consider here tonight and to pass on. Two of the policies, and I, and I'm, I'm gonna go through this because we hadn't had a chance of everybody to be in the, in the, in the committees to be able to discuss these things, and that's why I'm moving the way I'm moving. But next time, uh, I'm going to be looking for different individuals to talk for each, one of these topics besides myself. So, uh, you'll, you'll see that in a minute under the chair's report. Uh, tonight, one of the newest policies is policy, uh, 5003, prevention of sexual harassment as prohibited by Title IX. This was a policy that was exactly sent down from the Department of Education and asked us that we needed to get this right into the, into the, uh, to the school system. There were just a couple of words changes, I think, wordsmith in it that was only done. So this is per a recommendation from the Department of Education, uh, for us to have this particular policy put in place. And so it comes before us for a warning and it's 24 pages. And in that, this document gives a lot of specifics of what individuals need to do in certain circumstances. So I had an opportunity to read that and I hope all that other board members read it as well. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to accept that.
I'll move it.
Fran moves it.
Second.
Susan, second. Any other, any discussions, the questions? Uh, here none, all in favor? Is eyes?
Aye.
Any opposed? I, I got you, Charlotte. Uh, any abstain? None, that was unanimous. The next item, next policy is 5090, interrogation in search of students by law enforcement. It's been a long time going through this particular policy. Uh, it, it came as a result of several things that occurred in the school district, in the community. And we had to go back, look at this policy over several years and had our legal representation of lawyers, uh, go in and look at, uh, the policy. And the language was changed to, uh, mildly indicate the responsibilities of law enforcement within the, uh, the school system and what the requirements are for the individuals within the school system along that line. So, uh, basically, there were a header thing, the Vermont District, uh, Southern West Vermont Superiority Union is, are committed to provide a safe and supportive learning environment to all students. The members of the districts recognize that their responsibility incorporate with law enforcement and the Department of Child and Family, a children family. And then under that, we start to talk about some of the things that we, uh, have some responsibility. And one of the things says, students may not be interrogated by law enforcement or other non-school government officials unless there is legal basis to do so, including evidence of abuse and elect, uh, in imminent language, imminent health or safe threat. Uh, the law enforcement or other authorities authorizing at the school and wish to, uh, interview a student or investigate and, and alleged violation of law, they must contact the billing administrator, indicate the nature of their investigation and their request to interview that student, uh, students. To limit the disrupt, dispute, I mean, disruption of the learning environment and the student schedule. Such interviews will take place outside the school day if possible. So, uh, and then we go on to talk about kids, students that are under 18 versus over 18. So this language was, was, uh, reviewed at the policy committee. It was, uh, edited and reviewed by our legal counsel and is now bringing forth to us to, one, this, this policy. And that's policy number 90, uh, 5090. All in, could I have a motion? Uh, did I have?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
Second by Ron, that motion by Fran. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, vote, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Uh, any extension, abstaining, none? I'm gonna do some, I'm gonna lump the next ones together. And the reason I'm going, they've been here as a warning to us already and they've gone through the process. And we've had no changes or no comments. And so I'll just read them and then we can have a vote to take them all at one time. And that's policy number 5185, anaphylaxis is up for adoption. With policy 5145, six health and barrier methods, uh, available. With policy fifty-one forty-five six health and barrier methods availability. That's a name change for a particular policy. If you got really, if you read that so that to be more appropriate of the day's day and time besides the old language. And this was a condom policy. So conflict of interest in Haring is up for adoption for four thousand thirty-five. Special education, six thousand fifty is up adopted. And curriculum-based field trips, sixty-two thirty is up for adoption.
I'll move.
All these have been moved by Fran and second by?
Ron.
Ron. Any comments concerning the adoption of these policies?
Leon, I have, this is Stephanie Mulligan. I have a comment on this. I'm concerned about voting on passing the curriculum-based field trip policy at the moment because currently in the FBSU ESD there there has been some conflict around student testing as a condition of, well, like as violating this policy. And it is, it has been yet cleared up, I think, and they're having a public or they're having a special board meeting on Monday, and I'm not sure that we should be passing a policy that seems to have so much ambiguity in it unless per, and I don't want to drag whatever that issue is into this meeting, but I also just don't, I don't. In in absence of clear clarity on this, I don't think we should vote on the curriculum-based field trip unless, Jim, you want to speak to it. And then I don't want to put you on the spot. So I that's.
So I was gonna, before we get to Jim, is what I'm gonna say here is that the process is that we had a warning, and this this policy was sent around to all of the boards and all the administrators as well to review and come back with comments before it comes to this point to be adopted. And so the first thing is that the comment should be coming. If there's a problem with the field trip method, I'm looking for the administrators to come forward with what that problem is so we can resolve that in terms of a policy. And and the the passing of this policy won't affect a change because none of these are written in stone where they can't come out and be changed. So the vote is to vote these as they're reading, written in that how they were warned and to adopt. And then if they go to the schools and administrators find that something needs to happen, we have administrative regs that can be adjusted as opposed to what's in the policy.
I respect that. Leon, I guess I'm just, I'm just confused as to if if the FBSU ESD's policy went into place last month after the warning, and there's already challenges with it. Then I'm not really sure why we're, you know, that so we can put this in place, but then then it's going to go back through the entire policy committee again. Is that what I'm hearing from you?
I would, yes, I would help Jim have a comment, but yes.
So I don't see where this impacts either, right? The, I don't see it that the issue with field trips is policy. It regards to the regard to it. For those who aren't familiar with the issue, we have a field trip or a couple of field trips that that we're saying students can't, I am saying that students can't participate in, and our legal counsel is saying students can't participate in because there's been restrictions put in place to go on those field trips by the vendor, such as you need to be tested to go on the field trip. Field trips are part of the day, of the school day. We do not, so whatever restrictions we have in place to come to school should be the same. We don't require students to be tested to come to school. Therefore, requiring a student to be tested to go on a field trip is putting that requirement in place for them to go to school that day. And that's that's different than, I see that as different than what this policy said. And and Stephanie is right. The union elementary board has called a meeting for Monday night to talk about field trips, not about the policy, and whether they feel differently than what the superintendent is recommending and what legal counsel is recommending, which is, because if we if we say yes to the testing, the kids need to be tested to go, and somebody does not want to be tested. How do we require that? And that is a school day. So how do they attend school that day if we have put a restriction on them going to school? That's that's how I how I see that issue. And again, I don't see it impacts you voting on this policy because I don't see where the policy really comes in a play.
And that's fine, I appreciate that. I just.
I I wanted to say I I agree with Jim and that that appear to be in the column of the administrative rigs of this policy, and and it will be held that way through the administration part and not the, there's nothing wrong with this policy as it's written. Only a question of of the implementation in which Jim has indicated something that may be in administrative rigs.
Well, perhaps the regs should state when the administration should respond to field trip. And maybe the administrative regs could be updated at some point in time.
Now duly noted, the this this board responsibility for everybody understand is to put a policy in place that's general enough to allow administrative rigs to be written and performed. And if they're not in line with that, then don't have the legal guardians for that. Then we will, they can make those changes. So the board can say the policy doesn't reflect the administrative rigs, and they need to be changed, and we can take care of that that way. So I'm going to end that and duly note, thank you, Stephanie, for those comments. I wasn't aware of those being the chair of the policy committee. I wasn't aware of any concerns from the elementary school district. So we have a a motion, and it's been moved and seconded. And I'd like to have a vote. All in favor of the policies C through G for adoption, adoption? And by eyes?
Aye.
Opposed? None abstain? Here none. All is one hundred percent. And thank you. At this time, we would go to the superintendent's report. You there? Jim, are you going?
I'm there. Yeah, I'm just.
Okay.
Yep, I'm just flipping to a different page. So just a few items that's where my notes go. Bear with me. I have a little computer issue. All my notes have disappeared, so I'm gonna have to be winging it a little. So sorry. That's what I get for not printing out something in advance. Most important, I I guess I want to tell the board is last day of school, you know, Byron, and we can get, continue to get all our days in between now and then will be June tenth. And I'm asking that the week of June sixth to the tenth be half days. That's what the other school districts will be doing. So be half day for students with one-serve early release. Middle school and high school, I acknowledge that, you know, with their testing schedules, it may be, they may do something a little different. I haven't completely discussed that with the principals yet. Maybe they can address in their reports what their end-of-week schedule will look like. I know that half days at the end is a little bit different for them. The last day for staff will be Monday, June thirteenth. And I say as long as we get all the days, required days in, and I don't have to apply for waivers. You know, there's still things that can go wrong, like I, we didn't have school at Bennington Elementary School today. And we're not gonna have school at Bennington Elementary tomorrow because of an electrical issue there. And you know, last Friday, I I came very close. You have Nick Galt there. He and I were monitoring from, along with some of our principals from Wednesday through through Friday as we saw the number of staff absences climb. We're being hit by COVID again and and also your use of personal time, but sick day and personal time of, as you remember how the contract reads. The last two weeks of school, staff cannot take personal days, or teachers cannot take personal days without the approval of the superintendent. So we usually do see a spike in the use of personal days as we approach those two weeks. So last Friday, we had a hundred and forty-nine staff members out of all schools. Now, it's all buildings. And it certainly did impact particularly the middle school. I have to applaud them for still being able to stay open and operate. And I know that Mr. Payne is worried about what this coming Friday may look like for numbers at the high school. And I know Arlington High School is struggling with the same thing as they're seeing again, another round of COVID come into our buildings and people needing to to quarantine. So I'm hoping that we will get all the days in, and I'm not going to have to extend it beyond those dates or seek a waiver from the state. So June tenth, last day, the week, sixth to the tenth, half days of school. I do want to address the next year's school calendar because I want to acknowledge that, you know, there's been some concern over a particular amount of half days that are there in the calendar. So a little review, I have to submit, the superintendent drafts the contract, the the calendar along with the other superintendents. We have to do a regional contract. This is a, why do I keep saying contract? We have to do a regional calendar by by state statute. And it's around all who feed the same tech center so that, you know, our vacations align so that students don't end up actually missing two weeks of education because one school's district has a different vacation week than the other. So and I have to submit that calendar by April first, which I did. And we can always go back and make, you know, alterations to the contract and and do a calendar and do an updated calendar. We've done that in the past. But I felt, you know, I had this submitted by April one, had to get it out to families, particularly so everyone knows when the start of school is, when school vacations are, the school vacation weeks, and when school will end, depending on how many snow days we have. So that we did. It's, the calendar is a real challenge this year because of our merger with Arlington and days that they have in their calendars and day that we have in our calendars. They participate in a ski program with Bromley that they are, they do half days every Wednesday, month of January, February, and most of March. And then add in our half days for professional learning, which are crucial. You see, I think the calendar has like twenty half days. Two of those were already there, like the half day before, you know, the Thanksgiving recess. So I will continue to look at alternatives to that, if there is a way to reduce it or deal with the impact of of those professional learning days. I met with the Arlington Education Association to hear their input because they had concerns particularly around how parent conferences were addressed in the com, in in the calendar because it's different than how we did it. They're also, their their day count of that that their staff works a different amount of days than our than our staff does, close, but not quite the same. So those are some of the challenges with that calendar, but we had to get it out by a deadline, had to get it out so people had it in front of them. But I will say that, you know, we are an educational institution first. And I know that many families rely on schools to also, you know, double as childcare. I acknowledge that, but we are an educational institution first, and that that's my first priority. And what in, but being conscious of everything that we do and how it impacts families. We need professional learning time. We need time for teachers to work with their colleagues. We need time for teachers to study data within their buildings and with their in their departments and with their principals, and then use what what that data to impact instruction. All that has to happen during times that we pay our staff. I can't require teachers to stay after school. I can pay them to stay at school, but I can't require them. I can't require them to work summers. I can't require them to work vacations. We offer incentives to do that, but the only way I can be assured that all teachers participate in the professional learning is when we do it in a time that we already have staff, and that is, that is the reason behind, you know, release days. I will say, if if I was designing the school system from scratch, I'd have a release day every week. I would have, I think that is the ideal schedule for education to improve so that you can constantly be reevaluating, you know, what you do and putting feedback into your staff and looking at data and seeing how we're, you know, what adjustments we have to make. There are a few other professions that require people to, that I know of, that would require staff to to do that professional learning on their own time. So I think that it's critical that we have this built into our system. What is the right amount of days is what we're, you know, are still debating, still looking at. And I pledge that I will continue to look at that calendar. I I have to meet with our calendar committee and put in the impact that the Arlington Education Association is requesting. So that, you know, that's the combination of the two school districts is really what's into one calendar is what is, and we are now one SU, so it's one calendar. Is is part of what has been a challenge for us and impacted. So so those who are listening, please understand, I don't consider the calendar done. I've gotten emails from parents, you know, requesting that we look at it, understanding why we have it, but look at it. And I've heard from some board members. So also, and the best I can tell you is I will, I pledge to continue to refine the calendar. Any questions on either of those two items before I go on?
Any questions?
Can, this is Stephanie again. I'm sorry. Can I just ask a question on the half day? Does Arlington School, like my understanding is their Wednesday half days that were that, you know, it's being that they've historically had is around their GIPS. Is would it, you know, are are all students, do all students go to GIPS on their half days? Is that?
I don't know that.
Okay, I just maybe.
So we, so we, so we have expanded, we have expanded, we have reached out to Jeff and see if our schools can participate, and the answer is yes, they have enough capacity that if we have schools within our district, the 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 original SU or whatever we want to, you know, refer it to, then that that is, we have the ability to expand that.
To expand them to Wednesdays and because like Shafter.
Yeah, but I, my, my understanding, yeah, my understanding is that they do not attend school at all. There's not like an alternative program. But I will, I will ask, but I don't, I don't have my notes from that meeting in front of me to, you know, recall with certainty what happens to students that don't participate.
Yeah, and I would have.
Thank you.
Do you have a question for Jim?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I, that was a similar conversation that came up in the elementary board as well in terms of, you know, if if Arlington's gonna be Wednesdays, then we in our area have typically been Tuesdays. So can we get those switched to Wednesdays so that though we don't have children that are potentially missing half day on Tuesday and then half day on Wednesday for the half days that are now built into the schedule. So I think if we, if GIPS can accommodate that, I think that would be the best scenario.
Yeah, Bromley has responded that they can accommodate all schools on Wednesday. So we can ship, any of our schools that we're doing and any of that want to expand to it can have those Wednesdays.
Well, thank you. Any other? Jim, you have more?
I thought I did, but honestly, my my notes are not coming up again. I thought there was one more item. So what I, why don't we let the principals give their report, and I will see if I can find what that is, and if I have one more thing to bring up to, I will.
Okay, I I just wanted to make sure. I promised everybody that one of the goals, and I mentioned it last time. This is a one-hour meeting, and I'm gonna hold us to it. And so we're getting close to that. So we have, we have twelve minutes left.
Okay, I do have one more item, and thank you. Thank you for the mystery person who was listening and texted me what it is. He's sitting right, he's sitting right in the room with you, Nick Galt, so why don't I yield the floor to Nick? This is, this is about. He's sitting right, he's sitting right in the room with you, Nick Galt, so why don't I yield the floor to Nick? This is, this is about um. Wage increases for your non-union employees, a yearly, a yearly vote you need to take. Nick?
So in the interest of being um efficient, um we are recommending to the board a a non-union wage increase of three percent for the. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um that has been uh proposed and approved at the SVSU and the SVU ESD meetings. Um and will be also proposed at the Arlington meeting tonight. That's consistent with prior years. It's also consistent with the wage increases for our uh teacher, support staff, and administrator. Uh bargaining uh contracts as well. So it feels falls in line with where everybody essentially is anticipating. It's feels appropriate um, an appropriate wager for those non-union positions for the MAO.
Okay, I I hear you. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, it did make the agenda, so I wanted to. And it didn't make it for the discussion, even though we're covering it under the superintendent's report. I. I guess we can get away with that. I don't want any legos, leggies to come out and get me for not having put that on the agenda or not. A man agenda to include that item along that line, but I agree with Nick uh. SVSU voted and other school districts are already voting to accept that. Factor that we give non-union employees a three percent and it's now up to uh Mount Anthony. To a vote on that. So that was a a motion that need to come from the board. After finance, in in the future, it would have been something that the finance committee would have been hearing about. And then brought it to the board in the form of a motion to accept uh. A three percent increase for non-uh union members. It's been moved, second. Second from uh Ron, uh any uh discussion? All in favor? Eyes? Any opposed? Any anybody abstaining? None. Okay, one hundred percent. Thanks. Now.
Thank you, thank you, boy.
Okay, uh we're gonna have the high school principal, Tim Payne, first, and then uh. Chris McGuire, second.
Uh so I'll start with the fact that our student representative is not here this evening. Uh she sends her regrets. They are in the final tech week preparations for Mamma Mia, the High School Musical, which will start tomorrow, which will premiere tomorrow. Tickets are available at the high school. Folks would still like to purchase them, and I encourage you, it's gonna be a great show. Even better if it's not ninety-five degrees on Saturday since we don't have AC. That's for friend. Um so currently, uh this is the report from the student. Currently, the student senate is working on its class officers elections, which are next week. Uh so they are encouraging students who are interested to apply for the Google Classroom. Uh they are also, we've been meeting pretty regularly. I attend their meetings twice a month. Uh they are already planning for next year, uh based on feedback they've got from student membership. They'd like to do a couple spirit days. Uh they are also hoping to host a club fair early on in the school year to increase student participation in clubs. And uh they will be participating in our awards night, recognizing their members, including nineteen of their current members. Who actively participate in their activities. I'm trying to keep an eye on the game clock. Um end of year calendar dates, I think that are uh for the board's uh purposes. June the first is underclassmen. This is nine through eleven awards, six P M in the auditorium. June the third is the last school day for seniors. June the fourth is prom. That'll be at eight o'clock. Uh looking forward to that. That is a junior senior ball. Uh June the eighth is senior awards uh to six P M uh in the auditorium. And June the tenth, as Mr. Colkey's already noted, is the last day for students. Uh that means our exam schedule will be June the eighth and ninth. Those are half days. There'll be exams. Students have been made aware of that. The ninth is held, or I'm sorry, the tenth is held as a makeup day. Graduation this year is at six o'clock. It'll be on June the tenth, that is Friday evening. Uh and then June thirteenth, as Mr. Colkey's already noted, is the last day for teachers. As always, board members are more than welcome to join us for awards as June the first and the eighth, also the graduation. Um you could go through the chair to reserve a seat if you wish to attend. It's always a good um. A good time, so we look forward to that. All we need is good weather for ourselves.
If there's not good weather, is there, I I know, understand there's limitations if you're gonna do it in the auditorium. Will there be COVID policies in place or?
We do not have COVID policies in the building, but we do have folks, folks want to wear a mask, they're more than welcome to do that. What will be in place is that we far fewer tickets available for families to attend. Just a couple of quick things. Niasc, this is the accreditation group that visits the high school every ten years. Visited us after a reschedule. They originally supposed to come and see us in April. They had a COVID incident on their teams. They had to revisit. Just want to thank Carrie Friday. She's a social studies teacher and the chair of the committee who wrote the report. Basically, they've been preparing since the start of the school year. You need to do a reflection. You need to issue a report. A visiting team of outside educators, in this case Essex, Rutland, and Rhode Island came to school. They take a look at your report and they give you feedback on based on the evidence they collect that says, yes, we agree with this. These are things that you're doing well. These are things you need to work on. We had a brief uh debrief today at the end of their visit. I just want to say this publicly. Uh they were most impressed. They talked to lots and lots of kids in the hallways, in classrooms, in groups. Uh the thing that they wanted us to share is that overwhelmingly, students say that their faculty, their teachers. Care about them, that are available for them, follow up with them, especially in the COVID age. And I just want to say that publicly. I want to thank the staff and the faculty for that. Um we had a faculty meeting today. I shared that with them as well. The visiting group will issue a report in June for our review. And then that team will return in the spring of two thousand and twenty-four as part of their ten-year. Visit cycle to um the building, so we will be preparing for that. Two quick other notes. Hiring process, you see from your notes this evening. It's a busy hiring season at the high school. We are nine submissions this evening for both by the uh this uh group. Uh so we appreciate your consideration. We are still looking for two science teachers, two social studies teacher, and a P E teacher. I will share this. Chris and I have talked about this. I have, it's been a long hiring process. We've started in January. I've had a number of candidates who have declined offers based on the fact they could not have find affordable housing within driving range of Bennington. So I just want to put that out for the public to consider. Last thing I want to can uh share, as everybody read about in the banner, Ashley Hoyt, our athletic director. Has announced her uh resigned. She's resigning her position. She's going to be taking a position down in Maryland. I was part of the hiring committee. It was my pleasure to be part of the hiring committee that hired Ashley. Extremely proud to be part of that effort. She's been an outstanding athletic director. Uh she's organized, she's hardworking, kids respect her. She holds them to high expectations and they perform for that. Um she's done an outstanding job hiring uh coaches. Um but I understand that this is a great opportunity for both her and her family. Uh and I just want to thank her for her service to the MAU, and we will start the process of finding a replacement for her.
Any questions with Jim?
That's gonna be posted, Tim, this week if it already hasn't, Nick, right?
It is posted now.
Already up.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, uh we have Chris McGuire from the middle school.
Toughest time slot in the meeting right here. I feel like, man, you don't have the Oscar music queued for the middle of my report, do you? Playing the music and I gotta wrap it up.
He just has a really big.
I'll try to be brief. Um so I wanted to point out that on last Thursday, uh the twelfth, we had a a really successful community night at the school. Um so we had a combination of three different events happening at the same time. We had an academic expo. We had a uh youth leadership team present um some results about the youth risk behavior survey that they've been kind of analyzing and coming up with some action steps on. Students presenting their outstanding job, and I had the pleasure of participating in some question and answers with the community. We also had a visitor in Miss Vermont that was a president and spoke a little bit about mental health, so that was really nice. And then it culminated with a middle school talent show. Um so it was a long day. It was a thirteen-hour day hanging out at the school, but it was a lot of fun and uh. You know, I think this uh some good events for the students to take place in. Um I should thank Rebecca Sweeney, Glocko Coymans, and Ann Webster Lang because they were the three staff members that, you know, kind of coordinated efforts and helped organize the night. Um a little hiring update, um similar as Tim, uh you know, at the high school, we have a lot of positions to fill. I think right now we're. Have about uh seven positions, if I'm not mistaken, right now that we're trying to fill. We have. Uh filled a few throughout the year as well, hired a um I think three different teachers dur- during the school year because of um, you know, some resignations. Um so I have two math positions, a sixth and an eighth grade. We're moving forward uh with, you know, some interviews, and we have some candidates that we're quite interested in, and I'm hoping to be. Sending some stuff your way, uh Mr. Galt, soon on that. Um I have a social studies opening that uh one of my associate principals is putting, has a committee, a search committee, and they're doing interviews. And their social uh associate principals uh doing a committee for science. And uh I'm working with student services for three uh different special education positions uh that we have open in the school right now. So working hard on that, and we'll continue to over the next, uh you know, hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to, uh you know, wrap that up before uh gets too deep into the summer. Get people settled. Uh end of the year events, um we have a Patriot Celebration Day. This is a a um. Uh you know, an annual event at the middle school. Last couple of years, not so much for obvious reasons, but it's back this year. So it's a a day of uh different activities and events, a lot of team building stuff for students to participate in. Um and we're having a school-wide barbecue that day. That's Thursday, the twenty-seventh. If anyone. Uh has a moment to come by, it's a pretty neat thing to check out. Mr. Payne has had the experience, obviously, of hanging out for Patriot Challenge Days as well, or Patriot Celebration Days. Um end of the year calendar, we have an awards assembly on Thursday, the ninth. Uh for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade respectively, eight fifteen, nine fifteen, and ten fifteen during that half day. Uh our eighth grade celebration is uh in that evening from six to nine o'clock. The celebration won't take three hours, but we will be. Having a reception with some uh, you know, fun things for students to participate in afterwards. My ma- I won't go into the details because I don't have time, but my master schedule that I've been talking about throughout the year is coming along quite well, and uh we're uh. You know, moving forward with the new schedule for next year. I'm really excited about it. Be happy to talk about some details about that at any time, but I think it's gonna. Support middle-level education. Uh it's gonna support uh allowing students to get access to um to interventions, and it's also gonna support inclusion work. It's also gonna support collaboration um time built into the the day for special educators and gen ed teachers, which is a um. Has been a challenge in our current schedule. We just wrapped up map testing, and as always, I want to thank Norm Nicholas because he helps uh very much at the school organizing the testing days, so we just wrapped that up today. We did. Maps reading and maps, math tests Tuesday and Wednesday this week. And I'd love to stop there and end on a purely positive note, but I should report to the board that, and the superintendent actually shared this with. With Jim the other day that I will not be getting a mullet. We were not able to reach the goal in the bathroom challenge. We reached a couple benchmark goals, but um in all honesty, you know, keeping the bathrooms clean and free of vandalism has been a a daily challenge in itself at the middle school. And unfortunately, um it, you know, it's not every student in the building, and I I constantly go back to that. Uh most students in the building are good citizens. They take care of business. They do what they're supposed to be doing, and we are, you know, working on some. Uh we continue to work on plans to uh, you know. To indicate who has been, you know, causing the damage to the bathroom and then working through restorative practices to um, you know, to support those students and and, you know, find some resolution. But I will not be getting a mullet, at least uh at least now as part of the challenge, but you know, I, but look at, I mean, now it's like ready. It's, you know, I worked for one sentence, so.
Get it anyway.
Well, you know.
I think you should have done it anyways, Chris.
Hey, I mean, it's still. Well, that's what I'm doing, Mr. Rich, is I'm I'm sticking to the 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 goal, and you know, we we didn't earn the goal. Um we had ample opportunity to do so. And uh, you know, unfortunately, we we just, we're we're not able to meet that mark, even though we went back to the drawing board. Um and really tried to work with students on getting there.
Well, it's a good idea, Chris. I I like it.
Maybe you need to take the Tim Payne move.
So that's.
Next year.
Yeah.
And and maybe it was the.
What I was about to ask was there any questions for? For Chris? If not, we're gonna move right on uh into the next section. I'm gonna ask for another five minutes, and it's tonight special, but I'm gonna do my best to keep to that one hour. Along that line, but if the board doesn't mind, I'm I'm gonna take an additional five minutes, and I'm gonna start with under the chair report. We'll start with the flirt. Jackie Kelly has several notes to uh.
Actually, letters.
Of letters.
Letters of appreciation, and I'd like to read them out loud so that everybody can hear what these people have done. The first is Brian Coon. The Mount Anthony School Board would like to congratulate you, your staff, and the wrestling team for another outstanding year. Winning the thirty-third straight Division One State Championship continues the legacy and high standard that you have worked hard for this past year. As head coach, you play an essential role in helping students achieve the athletic goals you and your staff give them. Your team has demonstrated excellence in their wrestling achievements and has set an example for fu- future students to follow. The next one is to Rob Short. Jordy, and um. Dear Rob Short, uh the Mount Anthony School Board would like to congratulate you, your staff, and the Nordic Ski Team. Students for an outstanding year and winning the Division One State Championship for the eleventh time in the program's history. This was not an easy task in a very cold winter with sporadic stove, the snow conditions. Your leadership and dedication to the student's success has not only inspired them to win, but has shown them. How staying the course leads to the greatest achievements. The following, the last one is to. Jamie. Caparola George, I hope I said that right. The Mount Anthony School Board would like to congratulate you, your staff, and the cheerleading team finishing as runner-up behind Rutland. In the Division One State Championship this year. Cheerleading is an outstanding sport, well-known for its athleticism and total team interdependence. Your collective goals set a high mark for other teams in this competition. Teaching students athletic precision skills and how to work in sync with others is a lifelong skill. That will lead them to even greater achievements. Your coaching will continue to inspire students during the coming years. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Jackie. This this is one of the things that we wanted to try to do to hip um. Most a positive environment within the school after going through all of the COVID types of things. We want to find things that are uh to, I mean, award. And knowledge meant to the people that are are serving in the school and the students as well. And so Jackie has uh done a great job going out there. Uh the next phase of that I have is I uh. I tried to contact everybody and I asked everybody about uh. What it is that they were interested in, and I tried to go off some of the background. I tried to mix up some things. So I wanted to make uh the 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 design of the school board. And this time is is to be able to have a chair of a committee and a vice chair work symbiotically together. To relieve some of the load and the pressure on an individual. And uh when I say committees, a committee is just that. It would be where a lot of the grunt investigative type of work. To be done and then come back to the board so that you can just give a brief synopsis of something that took place. Uh recommendation to the full board that's clear enough that we may vote and pass it right on. So uh uh that's the the direction I'm gonna be going in. And trying to set up, uh trying to do things so that we can work real efficient. And be more knowledgeable and be inclusive of the things on the Mount Anthony School Board. Uh so the first assignment that I had uh in trying to go through everything was our egg, land, and uh. Uh food services. And so uh that, this sheet is included, Susan, as the uh. The uh chair, Tori Rich as the vice chair, and Ron Higgins as another board member. Now, one of the things, these are board members that should be part of the committee that vote. Any board member can attend any committee, but what we asking that the ones that are actually been assigned. but what we asking that the ones that are actually been assigned due to voting, when it's time to vote to pass on something to the full board and then you'll be able to come back here and you'll still have a chance to vote on it. But for the efficiency of the committee, we wanted to run them that way. The next committee is education athletics activities. Uh, Charles is the uh, educational chair, Jackie Kelly, the vice chair, Dave Frederson uh, is a board member and Tori Rich is a board member and Susan, the vice chair of Mount Anthony is a board member. And I stopped at five because we have some legal requirements. If we had six board members, the superintendent remind me, then we have a quorum for a board. So this is why I'm reminding you, you can attend, but you can't vote at the subcommittee because that becomes a quorum, okay? Uh, and then we can school spin off. And from the education committee, there is a, a ad hoc committee that was formed for the Spinelli Field. And now the members that were on the education committee are going to be part of the Spinelli Field is Dave Frederson, Susan and Charlotte. Okay, and they will be meeting with that group to discuss things and then bring it back supposedly to the education committee and then it comes back to the, the, the full board. The next item is the finance committee. And uh, Stephanie Mullin will be the finance chair with Fran Kenny being the vice chair, myself and Susan to be part of that. And that's right now, I'll be able to move something around if necessary along that line. But this is to help the finance and facilities. A negotiation, there's teachers negotiation, which is not going on right now. Uh, myself, Brad Kenny and Stephanie Mullin will be on the teachers' negotiation team whenever that starts up. The uh, E S P negotiation team will be Jackie Kelly, Dave Frederson and Fran Kenny. And uh, we uh, uh, the next is the policy committee. And the uh, I put down uh, Fran Kenny as the chair, Dave Frederson as the vice chair, member Jackie Kelly and myself uh, on this committee. And I made a note of the fact that I was already the chair of the S V S U uh, policy, which is all of these members to be members of. So the purpose of the chair and vice chair for this committee is to bring the information back to this board and be able to discuss it, to be knowledgeable enough so that we can uh, move right on. The uh, S V S U reps then are Leon Johnson, if we voted on, Dan Kelly and Susan. And we have a treasurer, Dave Durfee and recorder, Richard Ball. Did I miss anything in terms of the uh, assignment? And that's Fran, you have a comment you made.
Well, no, my, my question, the question I had at, at the public comment areas about Spinelli Field, what's happening with that, haven't heard anything. Wanted to make sure that we had, when we have these committee meetings, that they're televised and there's minutes. This way here, nobody said, well, I didn't say this and I didn't say that, so that's one thing important I know, so.
All the, all the committee members were meetings that have minutes and put out as much as possible so that we can be formalized. We'll be talking about board training and responsibilities for everybody along that line. So that was uh, one of the other things under me was follow-up i- items. I wanted under the, the chair's report, an opportunity for each board member to be able to speak if they wanted to speak about something the public uh, bring up and, and be separate from a uh, public comment. So uh, I, we created a section, uh, we will be creating a section on the uh, the chair's report where board members will speak. And the board members on the, I mean, also under the chair's report, there is a follow-up action item title. If there are items that we create that this board unanimously vote and bring the board, that we need action to be followed up on, I would be asking clearly what that action is and have the consensus of the board to have the superintendent, uh, someone else take responsibility for something and bring it back. So that we'll, we won't be uh, uh, omitting something that may can, may have come in from the public that should have been for education or something that should have been for finance or something that should have been building and grounds. So I, I'd like to work that. I'm, I'm moving real fast because I wanna make sure I uh, meet the uh, back complaints. Uh, that's basically all I'm going to cover on the mind, my report here right now. Uh, for F Y I, there is a budget status report. And believe me, I read, went through, it's fifty-five pages. Expectations of the board members is that we go out and we read and look at all this information that is being prepared for us so that we will be knowledgeable about the things that go on. So it takes a while to do that. Uh, we did the Mount Anthony Committee Assignment. Uh, proficiency-based graduation requirement update for administrative rigs was included for you to look at. And the new S V S U uh, student enrollment that uh, was included, that included Arlington and Sandgate and so forth for the total enrollment for S V S U. With that, uh, I was, last thing that I like to do, we have Mount Anthony District Goals and I'm contraplating on moving these goals to the top of the sheet because they are what we stand for. And why should I put them at the bottom when I need to have them at the top? And so uh.
Make them a header instead of a footer, huh?
That's right, I would like to make them a header and tell, instead of a footer because this is what we stand for. So we're gonna be trying some different things to try to improve our outcome, our appearance and our enthusiasm and appreciation for the parents, the students and our administrators that, that are working for us to achieve the job that we wanna have done for the Mount Anthony Union High School. With that, I'd like to have an emotion that we uh, amend, I mean, uh, adjoint for the night.
So moved.
Uh, Dave Fredson.
Second.
And second, my friend Kenny, all in favor?
Aye.
I didn't ask whether any of us, any discussion? No. Any abstaining? All right, no, one hundred percent, thank you everyone and we'll, I'll do better next time.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.